And what I'd like to do is welcome everybody to the Select Board meeting on June 30th, 2022. And we're starting at whatever it is, 6:30 on the news tonight. And we have a fairly full agenda, so we're going to try and be pretty organized here. And what I'd like to ask first is if the interim town administrator could read the agenda for us, please?
Good evening. If I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is a public comment tonight from Nancy Hess. And items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 44 hours, 48 hours advance may be added. Item number one is the 6/27/22, 2022 Open Meeting Law Complaint of Richard Thompson. Item number two is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant for the interim town administrator, the next scheduled meetings of July 14th and July 28th, and a one-day liquor license for parlaying bounds for the community center. Item number three is a presentation on effects of climate change to the Sherburne community. That's being done by Robert Kearns and is sponsored by the Sustainability and Energy Committee. Item number four is consideration of signing an engagement letter with Thomas Mellon for legal services. Item number five is some appointments, the Historical Commission with Jim Guarino for a term to expire June 15th, 2025. That's a reappointment. And Jane Branch for a term to expire June 15th, 2025. That's a new appointment. The Historic District Commission is Jane Branch for a term to expire June 15th, 2025. That's a new appointment. And for the open space, it is Seth Malloy for a term to expire June 15th, 2025, and that is also a reappointment. Item number six is the proposed 40B Farm Road Homes. We use your comments from various boards, committees, departments at any public comment. After that will be routine business, which is any Select Board reports and the interim town administrator report.
Terrific. Thank you, Diane. So I'd like to start with Nancy Hess. Are you here, Nancy?
Jeff, we have to approve the agenda first.
Oh, you're right, George.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
All in favor, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul? We'll take that as a yes from Paul, and I'm a yes as also. Paul's hiding. So I apologize for forgetting. And Paul, you just approved the agenda.
Yes.
And so I'd like to call on Nancy Hess to make her public comment if she's available.
I am.
There you are.
Thank you. Our last meeting, you discussed the housing plan, and there were several references to the caustic property. Once we purchased the property, it was no longer the caustic property. And in fact, if you want to be historically correct, it had been the smart property. But we moved on and referred to it as 23 Washington Street until a mission was defined. And that was to incorporate it into the campus. So future references were made to the campus extension. I do thank Paul for reminding people that there were multiple purposes suggested for its use, which included an insurance policy for the future septic and well needs, building a new library and turning the old one over to a senior center, fixing the parking problem, a community garden, affordable housing, and even a marijuana growing facility. It was decided to wait for an imperative to rise to the top. Thus, the needs of the library for a staging area, a lesson learned from the police station building project. So much was done to remove the barriers between the two parcels, do plantings and other things to enhance the property without encumbering a future plan, heating the warning not to call it a park because of the legal problems that might occur with future use. It's unfortunate that the big ugly housing for the equipment for the fire suppression system got placed as further separation of the two parcels, but there is still potential for visually attractive outcome. We need to remember lessons learned from prior projects. The ledge discovered during the police station project made it pretty clear that trying to dig a hole big enough for the water tank there was problematic with other options not really explored. Any future projects need to take into account that there is a high-water table exacerbated by other campus drainage running through the property. One trouble spot coming off Washington Street was fixed by an earthen curb that was removed during the library project project. Thank you. We did have a conservation determination that it was not wetlands, but I feared that if some man-made problems aren't addressed, we may not be so lucky in the future, and our options may be severely limited. I know that the $10,000 voted at town meeting to explore the options of an entry to the campus from Saul and was repurposed, but I still believe that that could help the traffic issues and some of the Maple intersection issues, especially existing at commuter hours, town hall business hours, meeting time, election times, and high collection periods, taking some traffic away from the most congested and dangerous intersection. My point here is that I hope that what happens to our campus extension does not happen by default, but rather by thoughtful planning. And while I'm at it, I'd like to respectfully request that you have the doggy station funded by the Sherburne Business Association and removed for the library project be reinstalled as soon as feasible. I left a lifetime of refill supplies with the collector's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. And I think Sam Nelson's on here, but I think the people that are looking at Town Center Campus Project have a lot of this already included in it. So I'm pretty sure that your wish will be their command.
Thank you.
They're on top of it, and they've got a super talented team of three or four, five people working on it at least. Mary Moore, and I can't remember, Adley Berkowitz, and Jenna Walsh, I think Margot Powicki. I don't know them all, but anyway, it's a great group of people, so I think it'll come to fruition.
Well, it would be helpful if we called it the campus extension rather than the caustic property.
That sounds good. I actually thought I heard someone call it the West Campus or something. I don't know, but anyway, we'll see. So do I have a motion in respect to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye, and I am a aye as well. So then we're going to move on to a presentation on the Charles River Watershed Association. And I'm not sure who's going to present that.
Yes, Eric's waving his hand to you.
This point of order. I think you missed agenda. Item number one, the Open Meeting Law Complaint.
Oh, I did. You're right. I'm screwing up here. So I, we received an open meeting law complaint as we announced at the start of the meeting from Richard Thompson, and I entertain a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this item to the chair along with town council.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thank you for keeping me on track, guys. It's a team play here. So now, now we're going to, now we're going to go to the effects of climate change on the Sherburne community with the Charles River Watershed Association and the Energy Committee. I'm not sure who's presenting. Michael, are you?
Yeah, I can just give a little intro and then turn it over.
Okay.
Sure. This is a, this study that you're going to hear about is something that has been going on for a few years. It's one of the activities that the Energy and Sustainability Committee has been working on, as well as with the two part-time sustainability coordinators. In this case, for this project, I'd like to thank Tom Trainer, who's been the lead on it, along with Gino Carlucci has been helping with that, as well as give some thanks to DPW, to Sean Colleen and Addie Mae Weiss, who helped out with this work. And there, this is, this work is part of, the committee itself does to deal with climate change. I'll give a little better context is, we focus a lot on mitigation for climate change, which is basically trying to lessen your carbon emissions and try to head off some of the problems there. There's also how the activity of climate change, addressing climate change is what people call resiliency or adaptation, where we try to learn to live with the consequences that we're having. This work is a lot about this, more of this adaptation. As you'll hear about it, it helps deal with some of the possible flooding issues and other future consequences that might have for town, and it'll help us, and hopefully will help us deal with figuring out what are vulnerable spots, as well as what, where we need to do some improvements in our road infrastructure. It's just conduits to deal with stormwater management. And hopefully also help us, give us a little support for when we go for funding for projects to address these issues. So, and I'll give a final plug. If people are interested in these issues of climate change and that the Energy Committee certainly has, would like people to help, you don't have to be a member to help out. And in that case, I will turn it over to the Charles River Water Association that's been doing this, this work. And I'm not sure which of the two of you are going to take it over.
See, Robert, is that your name?
Russ.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. There's a little echo, but it seems like it disappeared.
Great. Thank you so much, Select Board members. Can you all see my screen? The presentation slides? Great. Thank you so much. And I'm here with my colleague Emily Norton, our executive director, who's going to start us off.
Yeah, so thank you so much for making time for us tonight. We know you have a lot on your agenda. I'm the executive director of CRWA, and Robert, as the slide shows, is our climate resilience specialist and is on the ground in many of our 35 cities and towns, helping local communities with efforts related to restoring the Charles River and climate resilience. In addition to being the ED here, I also serve as a city councilor in Newton, so I a little bit feel your pain and appreciate your service. And I know how much time you put in and how many complaints you take. And so with everything going on, we really do appreciate what you're, that you're making time for us. And I also will say, I feel particularly passionate about helping local communities with capacity, with knowledge, with support in any way we can. Because, because of my other role, I see how much you do with little resources, and the more CRWA can be helping you with protecting your community from climate change, as well as advancing improvements to the river. That is something that we want to be doing. Robert, next slide. So very briefly, CRWA, you may be aware, has been around since 1965, founded by a group of people who did not accept the conventional wisdom at the time that the Charles River could not be cleaned up, or one of the oldest watershed associations in the country. And we have various program areas, but in this case, we're especially going to be talking about our climate resilience work. Next slide. So just very briefly, I don't want to assume that people know these things. A watershed is when the rain falls on the ground in a certain community, whatever water body it ends up in, that is the watershed that you're in. So some communities don't even have the water, the river, the Charles River running through them, and they're still in the Charles River watershed, meaning decisions made related to development and land use and so forth in those communities still affect the health of the Charles. Next slide. We don't need to go very much into this. You know that climate change is here, whether it's the drought that we're in again, whether it's the flooding that we've been seeing, whether it's the extreme heat. We already had 95-degree weather in May. We know that climate change is here, and we know that we need to be protecting our residents and our businesses and our properties from climate change. Other parts of the country are seeing fires and other impacts, but here, we're really mostly affected or seeing it in the form of flooding and heat and extreme storms and flooding interspersed with drought. Go ahead, Robert. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Emily. And I just want to reiterate my, our thanks to you all, the Select Board, as well as the town staff, the folks, Tom Trainer, and the folks on the committee there, and Gino in Planning Department. So thank you all for having us. And like Emily was saying, we're seeing climate impacts across the Commonwealth, but also we're seeing it here in Sherburne. And we have a couple of examples of this locally. Two years ago, there was a large blue-green algae outbreak in Farm Pond near the Charles River, as well as some smaller outbreaks of blue-green algae last summer. And you know, this is something that we were also seeing in other parts of the watershed just a couple of weeks ago. And we currently still have an outbreak of the blue-green algae, the toxic algae in the lower basin of the Charles River in Boston and Cambridge. And these blooms are really caused by a combination of things, you know, the increased precipitation that Emily was talking about, increase, which also causes more stormwater pollution, you know, things coming from the roads, the sidewalks, driveways, et cetera, as well as all the phosphorus that's coming in from those surfaces and the higher temperatures as well. You can see, it's ugly, and this stuff is actually harmful to people swimming if they accidentally ingest it. And it also harm animals like dogs. We see warnings to keep dogs out of the water when this happens. Also, we're seeing, you know, our infrastructure here in Sherburne, but also across Commonwealth has not been designed for the stronger rainfall. This is Seville Brook under Route 16. Back last fall, we actually saw it washed out. So the increased precipitation, you know, these culverts in stream crossings were undersized. And what we're doing with this climate change resilience work is really identifying this and working with the state and the towns like you all to help build bigger and better infrastructure for the storms that we're seeing and that we will see more of in the future. And as you probably know, this is not happening in a silo. The town has done a lot of work. It was back in 2017, it was, you all were designated a municipal vulnerability preparedness program. You've done a summary of findings back in 2018, looking at your vulnerabilities in the town. And it went up and helped and expanded upon your existing FEMA hazard mitigation plans, which is another planning process that you all have in town, which is important because that plan, as well as this MVP plan, helped make sure that you all in Sherburne get state funding and are eligible for grants to fund these climate resiliency projects, help fix these issues like the culverts and like the stormwater issues. And some of the vulnerabilities that you all have identified have been excess water, drought, extreme precipitation, and a growing population. And as the folks on the Sustainability Committee said, we did a training for residents back in March, and we had a small survey that we had for the participants of that training and Zoom meeting. And we asked them, number one, you know, do you think the town is doing enough for impacts of climate change? Majority of people said no, or they didn't know. So there's more work to do according to these folks in town. Oops, sorry. I'm not going to read all these, but the top three impacts people are seeing, which is no surprise that you've identified, is extreme heat, droughts, and heavy rain events. But we will share all of this slides if you're on the future. Additionally, some of the stories people were talking about in the narrative part of the survey, people were talking about what things they need to do that impact their work and their lives. And a lot of folks talked about stories about, you know, updating their homes for air conditioning because of the extreme heat and having more clean cooling, impacts from more power outage that are impacting septic systems, concerns of impacts of climate change to the ecosystem, wetlands and trees because of the extreme storms. So this is some of the concerns of residents that we found. Not totally surprising, but it was good to hear from them. And just some context, looking at this graph shows where Sherburne is in comparison to other communities. And you all are really a step ahead of the curve when it comes to impervious surfaces or your blacktops, your parking lots, your roadways. So that's all places where the water runs directly into the river or your water bodies. And as you can see, Sherburne is here on the left-hand side. It's the lowest percentage of impervious surfaces because you have, you know, a lot of green space, a lot of open space farms that are, you know, bringing in the water and not filtering it. However, with development pressures, you all are going to be seeing more opportunities for looking at where you are developing to make sure you're implementing the green infrastructure to sort of reconnect groundwater so that you're not, you know, increasing flooding downstream or harming your water quality. So when we talk about that, this is just showing, an image showing how, when you have higher blacktop, impervious surfaces in more developed areas, you see more runoff. So the water's going right into the river, right into your streams, rather than going into the groundwater and filtering back in. So like I said, you guys are ahead of the curve, but with development pressures, you should keep this into consideration when you're looking at your bylaws and things like that. Next up, so this, this image shows where, you know, where you have higher concentration of impervious surfaces or your blacktops, your sidewalks, roadways, and where we're seeing more flood vulnerability. As you can see, in the more urbanized areas, the more areas with roads, parking lots, more development, we're seeing a higher amount of flooding because the groundwater is not being reconnected. So I'll talk about it later. We're actually modeling where flooding is going to be happening. But this is just showing that when we have more of this development and without any interventions, we're going to see more flooding. So we're trying to work with folks like you all in town to help, you know, address it before it becomes an issue. And people, you probably know this, but not everyone knows this. When anything coming on the roads, your sidewalks, your driveways, that goes directly in the river. People think that the storm drain is a little gray to see on the side of the road, you know, are going to a sewer system. Actually, it's not. It's going directly into the river. So if you dump an oil, which is not, not good, into that, it's going to go right into the Charles River, and it's tributary. So we're just educating people, make sure you're picking up your dog waste, and implementing these green infrastructure to sort of intercept it before it gets into the water. And the number one pollution that we're seeing that's causing this blue-green algae problems in the river is phosphorus. And the cities and towns are obligated under the MS4 permit with the EPA to help reduce this, to help improve the water quality in Charles. I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. And that comes from, you know, the leaves, fertilizers, detergents, and other things. And here's some information about the MS4 or the municipal separate storm sewer permit, which requires that, you know, Sherburne reduces its phosphorus load by 18% by 2038 to 26% in urbanized areas. So that means that, you know, the town, which is already working on implementing, you know, green infrastructure or rain gardens, underground storage to help filter the water before it gets into the river. And we've been doing projects with towns like Milford and other towns in the watershed community. I am working very closely with Sherburne and Gino, as he's a climate, our member of our Climate Compact. So we're working on helping you all meet these requirements to help clean up the river and reduce these harmful algal blooms. And also, communities like you all are required, because of this permit, to update your local code. It's something that I believe you all are working on. Switching subjects a little bit, I know Sherburne is, you know, neighboring communities in Natick. And I just want to let you all know, I think you all are already following this, but the Charles River Dam itself, Natick, is in very poor shape. It's a high-hazard dam, which means if it were to fail, there could be loss of life downstream. And it's in poor condition from the last inspection report. So the town currently of Natick owns the dam, and they're deciding whether to remove the dam spillway or people think it's a waterfall, but it's actually part of the dam, or remove about 60 trees on the earthen part of the dam on the other side of the river here to, because the DCR dam safety and Army Corps has a policy, no trees on dams. So currently, the town is deliberating whether to remove it or not. CRWA, we support dam removal and river restoration because of all of the benefits to, you know, the fish species. There's some brook trout species downstream, as well as benefits to paddling, to be able to paddle, you know, directly through this section of river. And the main impoundment or mill pond of the dam is located within the town of Natick, between the dam and the pedestrian bridge, if you know paddle in that area. There's a second impoundment or mill pond that's smaller, which goes up towards Broadmoor. But we think from the last presentation from the town that there would be insignificant impacts in that stretch. So there would not be really any impacts to Sherburne directly in changes of water level, which is good. Switching gears a little bit, but one of the great things in rate resources you have in Sherburne, you probably know this, but a lot of people downstream in Boston, where I live, don't even have any idea about this. But one of the original nature-based solutions or things that have been done for climate change is the natural valley storage area, which is a bunch of wetlands. They're not all contiguous or next to each other. And it's one of, back after Hurricanes Diane and Connie, the Army Corps came in and bought up a bunch of land to help preserve these wetlands to hold floodwater in case of extreme precipitation events, you know, hurricanes, no resource, rainfalls. And Sherburne's doing a great service to other communities downstream, holding this water to help, you know, prevent flooding in, you know, Boston, Cambridge, and, you know, your suburbs downstream. And this was done in part because of one of our former executive director, Rita Baron, who took the Army Corps on a canoe through places, excuse me, like Sherburne, looking at the wetlands and saying, this is a sponge to help, you know, soften the blow of these storms, rather than building these mega dams you see out west. So it's really providing an essential flood benefit to communities. So if you don't know about this, definitely should be tooting your own horn about, you know, the great thing that you all have in your town and in the surrounding communities. Switching gears, like I mentioned before, Sherburne is an active member of the Charles River Climate Compact, and that is our regional collaborative that we've worked with 23 cities and towns in the watershed. Myself and our deputy director, Julie Wood, help co-manage it. And what it is, is a bunch of folks from municipalities, it's your, you know, folks like Gino, the Planning Department, Health Department folks, working on sharing information about climate change and looking at a regional view of climate adaptation strategy. So we meet bi-monthly on Zoom, and we're coordinating with different municipalities. One of the great things that we've done that's came out of this regional collaborative is our Charles River Flood Model, which I highly recommend. If you don't know about this, check out our website, and I will send it up in our follow-up. But essentially, it is a computer model, which we've done two phases of looking at where flooding is happening currently today in the watershed, in Sherburne and other communities, and where it's going to happen in the future with this increased precipitation we're seeing. So we've worked with Weston and Sampson, and it's part of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. And it's, because it's a regional program, it's something that's been great because the towns have been able to, you know, work collaboratively and really leverage their money collectively more effectively, rather than doing it, you know, in silos, town by town. And we've identified, you know, areas to test where we're doing things like the flood storage and other things to help reduce the flooding. And some areas of interest for flooding in Sherburne include Dirty Metal Brook, Indian Brook, Charles River, and Dopping Brook. This is just a map from Phase 1 of the flood model. And Phase 2 has just come out, I believe, today. So there'll be updated maps on our website soon, if not already today. And to sort of wrap it up, I, some policy solutions that we all are recommending that the town consider. We're obviously not being prescriptive, but there are some things that you all could do to help increase your climate resilience, to help look going forward with respect to, you know, protecting your town and helping restore the town. So number one, one thing that you all could look into is strengthening your local wetlands bylaw to include language around climate change. Both City of Boston and Arlington are some of the only two in the watershed that have this. But it sort of helps, you know, the town have some more power and authority around climate change. Additionally, another thing to strengthen your local wetlands bylaw is to consider no disturb zones to help protect areas, resource areas. Additionally, you could add protection for imminent streams. Another thing to help get funding is to implement a stormwater utility or a way to get revenue to the town through a stormwater fee. Another one is you have a great tree bylaw for, you know, municipal roads. However, you could expand it if you'd like to protect trees on private property. We have good examples of that as well. The last one, another revenue one option is to enact the Community Preservation Act. I know that does not only, you know, open space protection, but does, you know, historic preservation, affordable housing, and other things in recreation. And I know you all have tried to pass it in the past, but obviously, things have changed. You know, development pressures have changed, and you can do it at different levels. Some towns do a lower percentage of the fee than others. And I'm not going to read through all this, but And I'm not going to read through all this, but this is just um. Going through the Sherborne Wetlands Bylaw in our recommendations in more detail and I will provide this. Um to y'all um. And this one, this is just talking about the tree protection bylaw, which I described. And and what what we're seeing like in towns and cities downstream. Some of it has a great one we have on our website, which helps protect uh mature trees on private land. Uh requires, you know, permits for removing um trees and exemptions for hazardous trees or diseased trees. So some of those is a good example if y'all are interested in that, um and then. Totally final, um just in context for Community Preservation Act. Um twenty-three out of thirty-five wa- watershed communities have it. Um it's a dedicated revenue source, like I said, for um those things and around Sherborne. Ashley and Framingham, Hollison and Millis have it and Natick is going to be voting on it in the fall. Um it passed town meeting and it's going to be on the ballot for residents, so it'll be interesting to see what Natick does. Um and then storm on utility, like I said, it's dedicated uh revenue source for staff. For doing green infrastructure projects, fixing drainage and complying with the stormwater permit and. In Massachusetts, there are twenty-four communities, not going to read all of them. Um and Franklin is one of them and they just pass it and they have a great fact sheet that we can uh provide to you all um. And that's that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, um would love to answer them.
Okay, great, uh maybe you stop sharing your screen, Robert. That was a terrific job and Emily, thank you too.
Oh, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
So I'm very nervous about this removal of the dam. I own about a half mile of the Charles River. And it it uh height fluctuates during the course of the year. I've. I have heard what you said about. It shouldn't have a significant effect, but how is that backed up with? With scientific data and reports and um. How? How reliable is that projection? Wouldn't want to see the dam removed and then somebody saying, oops, well, we didn't really consider. When you have a flood, that water is going to drain now even faster. Down through Natick and heading into uh the Atlantic Ocean.
Great, great question. Um with respect to flooding downstream, they the town, um they did analysis. When I said the town, I mean the town in Natick did some analysis with Stan Tech and GZA. And the dam is considered a runner river dam, meaning that all the water flows through it, so it's not holding back. Major floodwaters like you see in the dams like out west um. That being said, they did the analysis and they found that there'd be no change in flooding downstream, which is a good thing. Um with respect to the water levels, I highly recommend checking out the latest um. Meeting from the town in Natick where they they have a whole consultant team, Stan Tech, who did. The analysis of of where the um reductions of uh the water levels would occur and it's mainly, you know, by the impoundment area. Around the dam up towards the um pedestrian bridge.
I'll just add a little, yeah, Paul, that was an issue that we've been concerned about when they first started it um. And there are, they did some, you have to look closely at the hi- at the engineer's analysis, but it did seem. Um that uh that where it was. That even if they are off by some significant margin, that it doesn't come close to Sherborne, because we were, I was concerned about the wetlands impact in Sherborne. But uh it's also partially due to the fact that I don't think there's, the depth of that impoundment there isn't very large. Um so it's not a tremendous volume of water that's being held there now, as I think part of the stories. But that's uh but that's, there's a whole separate thing that goes on around that um. I'm just curious if anybody has, just focusing also on the climate change adaptation issue um. That there's other questions that people.
We have a uh Bob Murgerson had his hand up, so Bob, go ahead.
Hi, Robert, thanks for doing this. It was a great presentation. Um so my question is later tonight, we're going to spend some time in this meeting talking about affordable housing. And um, you know, I think there's. To a certain uh degree, um kind of a a tension between affordable housing. Um which has huge public health impacts and kind of pure conservation goals. And I'm wondering if you could tell us how C D R C R W A kind of deals with that tension, thinks about that tension, because. Obviously, both are important uh goals in a community. Thank you.
Emily, you want me to take that or you want to say?
Yeah, so um that is an excellent question and certainly something that um our other watershed communities are facing. And there's a lot of need um in the greater Boston area for more housing, but particularly more affordable housing. We don't um, we don't. We don't, we don't have a policy say on development, yes or no or whatever, but rather that we should be developing in areas that are not. Going to be flooding, so seems kind of obvious, but a lot of our development rules. Are still based on FEMA flood maps that are decades out of date. And so that is is in in general, and we're doing a lot of work, um for example, in Ball- in Boston, as you may know, Harvard University owns about a third of Alston. And they're planning a lot of development and there. We're working with the local community, say that's great, we need more housing, we need more affordable housing. But let's not do it in areas that we know are going to be flooded and when we do, when you do development or redevelopment. Uh strengthen your stormwater bylaws and regulations so that developers have to, so that the projects have to keep more stormwater on site. So that you're just, so you're not making the problems worse. Um I'm sorry, I got kicked out of the meeting a little bit, I'm zooming in from. Wellfleet, I know, don't hate me, um where the wifi isn't great, so I, so Robert um pro- probably uh covered this. Um but um, oh my God, I'm spacing out now, I clearly have vacation brain. Um, all right, never mind that, if I if I think of it, I'll I'll come back to it, but anyway, excellent question. Very much in favor of housing, in favor of affordable housing, what it probably means in the real world is that we need to be having more housing and more density. In areas that aren't going to be flooding, which is going to be controversial, um no doubt about it, and less where um. I- in areas that are um that are vulnerable now, oh, I know that he talked of this, what I want to say. I know that he was starting to get to the flood model when I was kicked out. And he probably um mentioned that even with the um significant investments in green infrastructure and land conservation. And even deep paving that we are recommending as part of this project. We are still in the next few decades not going to be even at the current level of vulnerability of flooding, so. We're even with the significant investments that we're recommending. And that we think are feasible right now, it's not going to be enough, so we really all have to be um. Just realizing that the reality that we're in now, the level of flooding, the level of rainfall, the intensity of the rainfall is not what we are going to be facing. Um it's going to be, it's already a different world than when we were all young and it's going to be very different in the future.
And the other, the other one thing, just to plug the Community Preservation Act again, that money can go to affordable housing and open space and recreation and historic. So it's another tool in the toolbox if the town wants to look into that is um another good thing.
Okay, George, uh uh you're next, I think.
Yeah, um I had one concern in your presentation, it just, when you got into um. Uh suggesting a bylaw regulating trees on private property, I I really have. Kind of an issue with um personal property rights. And if something's not, I I understand regulating trees within like a conservation zone or anything within like a buffer zone, absolutely, but. I I see the nightmare that people go that the DPW in fact goes through just trying to take down dead trees on the roadside. I I would be firmly against um regulating what people do on their private property if they're not in a protected zone.
Very much appreciate that and basically, we're we're just off- offering information, this is your, you know, your community, your decision. I will just, um I think of things from when I was a kid, it it was not illegal to burn leaves on your own property. It wasn't even that unusual for people to change their own oil and pour the oil down the drain. So these were things that people were allowed to do on their own properties that they're no longer able to, and when you look at. The benefits that trees provide in terms of cooling the air, cleaning the air, preventing flooding, mental health benefits. It's one of these things where they're on your private property, but they have an impact on others and particularly those. And it, you know, Robert showed you the uh the scale, how Sherborne is literally the least developed community in our watershed, so it's hard, you know, it's not exactly as. As urgent there as it is in Somerville, you saw, which is on the other side, but as you have more, you know, even your somewhat more urban areas. That are going to be more, if they're not already, are going to be more and more subject to heat island and heat island effect and to the extent that people. I won't speak for just Sherborne, but in other communities, in those are the areas that are more likely to be. Um having people who are more low income or for more more vulnerable in some area. Then what happens on your property doesn't just stay on your property, and so that, obviously, that's a conversation for all of you. Uh to decide and like I said, less urgent in a Sherborne than say a Somerville or a Cambridge or a Boston or a Newton. Um but that's, that's the mindset we're sort of asking people to just sort of be more open to, and maybe it would just be some trees. Um when you look at the climate impacts and the carbon sequestration benefits of mature trees, your sixty, eighty, two-hundred-year-old trees. When you take those down, the immediate impact um in terms of heat in particular. It's uh, it's it's undeniable, so um, so yeah, one of our our social media posts from a couple of weeks ago, actually, the the weekend of the mid nineties in May. Um our staff person had a heat, um I guess, not really a thermometer, but like a heat measurer. For under tree canopy versus, um this was at Herter Park, I believe, in Alston versus uh the the. Um asphalted area and it was like a difference of like twenty, twenty to thirty degrees, like it's it's stark.
Yeah, I understand it in places like Alston and and like Somerville, those very dense densely populated areas. We have a lot of trees in Sherborne and and it would take a major, I mean. For somebody to cut down a couple of trees on their one acre lot is not going to make a huge dent in the amount of trees that we have in this town.
Right, and it could be very localized as you, you know, in your, in your, in your areas that are developed and so forth, that could be something to think about.
Exactly.
Okay, Marion, we want to probably wrap this up here after Marion.
Yeah, I I could wrap it up with a quick question, that was a really good kind of uh overview of the of the tree issue on both sides, thanks for that. Uh I'd like to know which towns have, in your opinion. The best, most reasonable, most feasible private property tree uh bylaws. You 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 mentioned that those laws exist in other towns. Which towns have them and which are are the best?
You could look at Cambridge, you could look at Somerville and we can um, we'll follow up with you with some links.
You, uh actually, my point is, do you know of any towns that are more in a in a greener area that are trying to protect the trees they have in that way?
So I know this is probably not true in Sherborne, but in other communities, people wait until there's a crisis before they deal. I'm sure that doesn't happen here, and so the the areas that do have more tree cover. Um are probably the less likely to be the ones more advanced in this area, not to say that people shouldn't be thinking about it.
Yeah, I was just looking for examples that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't have a a ton, but Robert, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, um. The one, the one also, the other one is Lexington, it's a pretty green area, I know it's a little more developed than Sherborne, but that's another one with a good example. Um we could definitely provide more um in the follow-up.
Okay, great, thank you for your time, this was really, uh I think, very beneficial for everyone tonight and. Very glad to have the resources and I think we'll probably, I think, can either get your website or maybe post the presentation night. If it's not already on the Sherborne website, is that all right?
Yeah, that'd be terrific.
So we can take care of that, I think.
And we want to be a resource for you, so please, you know, don't be shy.
Okay.
I guess the main thing I want to say, in fact, it's just for all the issues with the trees and the other, I think the major. Come out of this whole work is a lot about dealing with our infrastructure. And what kind of planning and what and what resources we need to uh to identify. Where we need to worry about some of the uh those issues with stormwater management uh is really. The most important takeaway from some of this work, um because it's quite costly to do some of those things, um so. Uh I'll I'll let it go at that since you guys have.
Yeah, we 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 got to move onward and up, but but thank you again for uh that, you know, the Energy Committee and Sustainability and Groundwater Protection. For helping uh make us aware along with the uh Charles Charles River people, thank you. So we're going to move along now on to the next agenda item four, considering the signing engagement letter with Thomas Mullin. For legal services, do you want to talk about that, Marion?
Uh yeah, I can talk about it uh just very briefly, uh as as you know, uh there were. Conversations between Sherborne and Natick and with Framingham. Uh to uh negotiate water and sewer connections to mRNA facilities. Uh. That was needed to facilitate the the developments on Coolidge Street. That are now on hold, this was a large affordable housing development and in uh. And over fifty-five age-restricted development, you all remember those. Uh the developments are on hold, but they're not, they're not dead, they may be revived with a new developer. Uh but in the meantime, we thought it was important to think through and uh negotiate. Potential agreements with Natick and Framingham uh in advance. And uh George Marl and I have been working on this. Uh we cannot, especially with Framingham, um. We can't use our regular town council because they are representing Framingham. Uh so we need a separate town council and we want to use the same town council for both towns. So uh both Paul Durensis and uh and Chris Petrini, our current council, recommended. A an outstanding lawyer who's a municipal lawyer. Who works more in the northern suburbs, Thomas Mullin. So George and I had a meeting with him to just scope out how we might work together. And he seems to be just uh completely appropriate and a very good person to work with. So we would like to move forward with a general um and in. Agreement of engage with engagement with him and we look ahead and use him as needed. Uh his rates, uh you see in the engagement letter that was in your packet, extremely reasonable.
Yes.
He has special low rates for other communities, so we are asking for a vote of uh agreement to engage Thomas Mullin.
So do you want to make the motion, Paul? Thank you.
Yes, well, with a comment, uh Chris Petrini is winding down from Framingham. And so the conflict with Petrini should. Take care of itself in a little bit of time. I'm trying to remember what the last date was, I think, I think it was uh uh June thirtieth.
Well, that that may be, I know that Amanda Zaretta in his office was working with Framingham on this.
Yeah, but she's no longer in his office.
No longer in the office, okay.
I I and Chris recommended this person, Paul, I know Chris is involved in a big um trial right now in Worcester, I believe. So even in in terms of his workload, it might be uh worthwhile pursuing, we could always, uh you know, this is a. It's not a retainer or anything, is it, Marion, it's just an hourly rate?
Yeah.
Hourly rate.
So we could always adapt it if we needed to, I think.
Absolutely, but it gives us a resource that we that we need um in order to keep moving on this as fast as we can.
Yeah, exactly. Does someone like to make a motion uh?
I did.
Okay, you you second?
Second, yeah, second.
Marion?
I.
George?
All right.
Eric?
Abstain.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well, we'll pass uh four to one abstain. Terrific, that's great. So now the next item is item five, consideration of appointments, uh. I think we know, we've discussed some of these, we've seen the candidates, should we just move to uh approve the appointments or do we want to discuss?
A few people on here, Jeff, and I think we've always given people a chance to say something, I see Jane Branch is on here.
Okay, that's fine, that's a good idea.
I always like to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves if they've made the effort to make it to our meetings, so.
All right, let's see where you are, there you are, I found you, Jane.
Hi. Yeah, yeah. Hi, I apologize for being a little late, we were doing dinner with the family.
You're you're a double hitter here on both.
Yeah, I thought if there were, if there were openings, that I would uh put my, throw my hat in the ring. Um I'm relatively new to Sherborne, we moved here uh twenty nineteen. Um and we moved into the Amos Bigelow House uh right here in the middle of town, um right next to Unity Farm. And um I have a background in architecture and I enjoy living in the historic district. And thought that this would be a way to use some of my talents for the town.
Excellent, uh thank you for volunteering. He's very renowned, so there's Jim Guarino and Seth Malloy are the other two listed, I think.
Well, Seth is for the a- a- a different.
Open space, yeah.
Open space, understood. Right, open space, understood, yep.
And Jim Guarino's a reappointment.
Yeah, the other two are reappointments, so it was nice. And thanks for coming and introducing yourself to us.
Yeah, pleasure.
I didn't say a word for each of, oh, sorry, Paul. I, I jumped in ahead of you, but I'll just be really quick. I would say a word for both Jim, uh, oh, thank you, Jane, first of all. And, uh, I would support both Jim Guarino for historical commission and Seth Malloy for open space. They've both, both done a really great job on those two committees respectively.
So I was going to suggest that we clarify the issue that caused the delay, which is, what is the size of the historic commission? And so to confirm that, I'd like to move that the historic commission be seven people.
I think it said it could be a, what did it say? A minimum, a max, minimum of three and a maximum of seven was what?
Yes, correct. Minimum of three, maximum of seven.
Gee, I think Jeannie sent us an email on that, right, Diane?
Yeah.
Right.
It's in the packet, though.
Yeah.
I, I would like to second Paul's motion.
Um, well, let me just ask a question now that we can have some debate about it now that we have a second. Do we want to make it seven and what if they only want to have six? I mean, I thought the, the, uh, the bylaw, the guidance was three to five. If we make it seven, are they then going to be?
Jeff?
Yeah.
Peggy Novak is raising her hand. I think she'd like to make the comment.
Okay.
Yeah, Peggy Novak, Nathan Hill Road, I'm co-chair of the, um, historical commission and on both, um, historical and historic district commission.
Yeah.
Um, the, as far as I know, for as long as it's existed, at least since back in, uh, about nineteen eighty-one, the commission has operated under the assumption that they could have up to seven members. And over the years, the number has varied a great deal depending on how many volunteers there were. Um, we haven't, we often haven't been able to find a total of seven people. As you know, rounding up volunteers in town can be a little challenging. But as I said, they've always operated under the assumption that they could have up to seven members. So I would ask that it be continued and under that language.
Well, the reason why I, I made the motion is that, that, uh, virtually all committees that are referenced in the statutes allow local communities to set the number. And many communities set the number by bylaw. Here, there's no bylaw setting the number. If we set the number at seven, you can still operate with six, you can still operate with five. Doesn't mean that you're out of business, but it means that we know what to advertise for. And it, it should be a, a select board decision or a town meeting decision as to what the size is of a committee. So some towns, for example, have a seven member planning board. And you, but you can have a five member planning board and I've seen three member planning boards. Do we leave that to the planning board to decide how many members they should have depending on who they could find? Or is it better to set that as a specific number? The, the best practices for committee for, for all committees is to set a number. We can always change it. So if it's a select board setting the, the number and one year we have only three, we can change the committee to three. But right now we have, we have seven people. We, I feel we should put all seven on, the committee should be a seven person committee. Because it's not clear what the authority, the legislative authority in the town has decided for the size of this committee. It defaults to us to set the size of the committee. I was just trying to fill that, that, uh, that gap. Again, I'm speaking from a lawyer's point of view. I understand the, the convenience of having an informal committee be whatever size you want depending on, on what's going on. But the logic of that is that some days when three people show up, you're a three person committee and the next month, if you have five people show up, then you're a five person committee and then, and then what, a month later, uh, because it's a rainy day, you have seven people show up and you're a seven member committee. It's, 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 it's better to have regularity and, and, uh, stability.
Okay, let's see what, uh, we have Eric and, uh, George have both have raised their heads. So Eric?
All right, so the historic commission, so has it been basically acting as a five member committee up to, up until now?
No. Um, in nineteen eighty-one, it had seven members and associate and an associate at the moment, um, including Jim Guarino, who is currently a member and up for reappointment. We have six members.
But six members with one empty seat. It's basically been acting as a seven member committee, correct? It's basically been, at some, there was a vote of the select board or something. It's basically been a seven member committee and it is a seven committed, member committee now. Is that, is that how I understand this?
Um, yes, it would be a seven member committee with both Jim and Jane. Um, and that would be ideal. We, um, view it as a seven member committee. We just haven't always had a full slate.
I mean, I think it's important, uh, I, as a good part, you have to establish it, um, especially the historic district commission. I'm not, we're sort of talking about that one as well. Cause that one actually has some regulatory teeth. I don't know how much regulatory teeth the historic commission has, maybe it does, but when you have a regulatory and then you have to establish, do you have quorum? Do you have not of quorum? You can't just say like, oh, today we have five members or something, you know what I mean? It does absolutely have to be established, there's no question about that. If it is a seven member committee now, like if it's considered seven member, do we need to vote on this? Or, and can we vote on it? Cause it's not really indicated in, in the agenda. I'm worried a little bit about that, but, you know, I have no problem, whatever, whatever the commission wants, the commission goes. And if it votes, actually Peggy, ha- has it voted and actually made an opinion to us? As I said, we want to be a seven member committee.
No, it, it has not. Um, Suzie and I have discussed it as co-chairs. Um, as I said, it's, it's, um, in my experience and in Suzie's experience, and she's been on the, the commission much longer than I have, um, it's always operated under the assumption that it was a seven member commission, but not always with a full slate. Um, historical commission doesn't have any regulatory teeth at all. We're purely, um, a conduit for information and assistance to other boards and have a public education charge.
Okay. And we talked about for this whole size of the committee thing, we're talking about both, we're just talking about the historic commission, so I.
As far as I understand, we're talking about historical commission. The historic district commission, the number is set in the bylaw.
Well, I'm, okay, it isn't, okay, good. I'm fine with it being seven. I would like to see a vote of the historic commission, but I mean, if it's not important to anyone else, I'm fine with it. This is make sure our agenda reads correctly that we actually can set this tonight, that's all.
George, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I do. I just was going to say, uh, Eric kind of touched on it, but if you set it at seven and I know, right now you have seven members, but if you have trouble filling some of those seats in your quorums for, then, then you have to worry about having a quorum for some of your meetings. So I think the way it reads now that it can be anywhere from three to seven members, that kind of allows you to, if you only have five active members, you're quarantined three instead of four, which helps you be able to conduct meetings. So that's why I'd rather not vote on what Paul's saying and, and keep it as it is because the, the charter does say they can have anywhere from three to seven members, according to Jeannie.
That's kind of what I was, uh, trying to say too. What, do you have a, a sort of response to that, Paul?
Yes, because the, the statute authorizes the town to have a committee between three and seven. That does not mean a committee of variable size. It means the state of Massachusetts has given the town, the authority, set the size of a committee, but it can't be less than three, can't be more than, than, than seven. We need to set the size of a committee.
Okay. So how do you handle the quorum if you have, to the, the issues that Eric and George raise? How do you handle, if you have, we set the size of seven and they only have, you know, four or three regular members, how do we decide? You know, then two people can't work together if that's a quorum. I don't know.
Which quorum decided on the basis of how many committee members there are at present?
I don't know that. I thought it was.
Is quorum based on the, say, if we set it at seven, is quorum always four? Or if, if it's only five active members, is quorum three? That's a good question.
That's right, exactly. And I would say it's probably flexible enough. If there are only five members of a committee at the, at, at whatever moment, then a quorum is, is, uh, three.
But when we do our annual appointments, we can set the size of the committee. And we can do that every year. And so if we have only five applicants for the upcoming year, let's set the, the committee for, for five. If, if, right now we have seven, the, the problem is, we, I, I, I just don't think it's fair to have Diane Moore's, uh, uh, yeah, Diane Moore's go through thirty, forty years of history to try and figure out what is the size of a committee.
Right.
And then very, very well, it might be a determination that the size of a committee is seven and it's probably already set at seven. But if it's set at seven, then we have to live that and we have to, we, we have to have a seven person committee unless we now vote to make a five. It's, it's not that state law says you can have an any size committee. It's saying, we're giving you this authority exercising somewhere between three and seven.
Yeah. Okay.
That makes sense to me, Paul. I, I would, that's fine. Let's just vote on Paul's, that, that for this year, it's seven member committee then.
Yeah. So do, does someone want to second Paul's motion?
I'll second, Paul, is that okay? Yeah, you, that, that seven members.
Your mo- motion is to make the historic commission be a seven member committee, is that correct?
For this year.
For this year, we're not voting on historic district, just historic commission, right? Okay, Marion, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. All right, terrific.
Now I'll make a motion to make the appointments as presented for, um, hold on, I'll bring it up for, shoot.
I have it here, do you want me to read it?
No, I will, just give me a second. I just got to open the right window on my computer. Um, for Jim Guarino for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and Jane Branch for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five for the historical commission, for Jane Branch for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five for the historic district commission and for Seth Malloy for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five for the open space committee.
Second. All right, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well, five to zero, terrific.
Thank you all.
Thank you, nice to meet you, Jane. Thanks for coming on.
Thank you for volunteering, everybody. So now we basically, other than select board reports, we're going to spend the rest of the meeting on, uh, item six, the, um, forty B farm road project. So I have a plan for how to run the discussion, so I just want to run through it quickly for you so that we're all on the same page. And my goal is to make it be, you know, as sort of efficient as it can be. And, um, what I'd like to do, I'm going to give a brief preface of the process we're, uh, considering or we're, uh, uh, working on. Marion's going to give, since there may be some people who aren't as familiar with forty B projects, Marion's going to give an introduction to the forty B process, just so they're, particularly if there's some residents aren't familiar with it. She's going to give a very quick overview of the forty B process. And then, um, I thought maybe we could see if there's after that, any select board comments that they would like to make upfront. They'll have time afterwards too, but we always try to let the select board make, uh, their comments. Item number four is Marion, we've received in advance, uh, uh, input from a number of boards and committees. Now it's preliminary because some of them haven't met yet officially, but they've given us preliminary comments. So Marion has, in order to be efficient, summarized the key points of each of the boards and committees that we've already received, so we don't have to get each one of them to present. Uh, she'll go through and provide a summary of the comments we received in advance from boards and committees. And then my next item number five is then we'll let the boards and committees provide any additional comments they want, whether it's Board of Health, Conservation Commission or whatever board it is. Um, and then finally, the last would be re- any resident comments. And I would encourage any members of boards and committees to just make it their committee response. And if they also have a resident response, a personal response, they should do that under the residence section. So I'd like to keep it to that order and our, um, I'll go through quickly, uh, my, my wrap up and, uh, on the preface and then we'll conclude at the end. So I want to make sure everyone has a, a chance to provide input tonight, so don't worry, we're not going to shut people out. We're going to listen to what people have to say. I, for anyone that doesn't know, the documents I believe are on the website. I think it's under land development, so the documents are all available out there. You can look them afterwards if you haven't, uh, done so already. Um, and I want to also say, we want to be respectful and civil at all our comments. You know, we have lots of opinions on this, um, uh, forty B proposal, but, you know, we, we're all residents and so I'd like to make sure that we're, uh, just respectful of everyone's opinions and, uh, listen to what they have to say and give everyone a fair, uh, say that they want to do. Um, the project, as people know, I think, is a very preliminary stage right now. There's not a lot of design details, so, um, you know, some of the comments, uh, will be high level just because of that. What we have to do though, the one of the, the goal of this process is we have to supply mass housing with the town's input or comments, uh, feedback by July twentieth. And so what we've asked, uh, as a select board is Marion is coordinating with town councils support the overall, uh, submittal to mass housing, uh, by, uh, July twentieth. And so, um, we're going to incorporate input from each of the individual committees into that report and she'll sort of pull together an executive summary, which includes sort of the highlights of each section so that there's an executive summary upfront. Um, so what we're doing tonight is, this is our initial meeting to discuss this. Tonight, we're sort of, um, getting some input. The boards and committees are going to have to have their own separate sessions of their, of their respective committees, not only to discuss it among themselves, but also to, uh, get, um, community resident feedback in their respective committee sessions. And that hasn't happened all yet, just because the timings of things. I know that I think groundwater protection already met and discussed it, for example. I think the planning board met and discussed it. I think the Board of Health is next week. And so that's still a work in process. So the next step is they'll be having those meetings over the next two weeks and they'll be gathering more comments from their board members and from citizens who attend their meetings. And, um, then we'll meet again with the select board on July fourteenth. And that'll be where we really go through in detail, uh, report that's been drafted and we can make changes to it, but we'll have more or less the final input from all the boards and committees, but we'll still have a chance to discuss it on the fourteenth. And we're going to devote most of the agenda that night to that subject. So there'll be plenty of time to talk then. So this is kind of the first meeting and the second meeting will be, uh, mid-July. So, um, does anybody have any questions? Uh, next step is I'm going to have Marion provide a summary for everyone on the forty B process. Are there questions, Paul?
Yeah, just, just a, a quick question there. This process usually is intended to elicit areas for exploration in the regulatory process. But there's a, a couple of legal issues that are separate and are legal and were raised by, uh, council. And that's not really, um, it, it's not really the environmental issues. It's not, it's not, it's not, it is, what's the word, best way to phrase it? It needs to be addressed by lawyers.
Procedure, more procedural, would you say, or no?
Well, proceed like, like one of the things being argued is that this, a, a one year delay before this project can go through the start gate because it's already gone, it's already been, related projects have already been presented to, to different boards in town. And this, this is a legal issue. And if that's the position the town is going to take, it really needs to be presented by our council, evaluating the law, evaluating the, the facts, because it either applies or it doesn't. And we could spend this tonight arguing the law about whether it should apply or shouldn't apply, but I don't think that's the purpose of today's hearing. The purpose of today's hearing is, is within the, the jurisdiction of the different boards and committees on the qualities of, of the proposal and the concepts of the proposal as opposed to these kind of legal issues. Are, are, are the legal issues going to be addressed? And if so, how is that going to be integrated into this plan that you presented?
I don't know the answer to that question because I didn't realize that would be separate. So would they, would that, let me ask a, a ignorant question. Would those legal issues be outlined in the document we submit on the twentieth of July or by the twentieth of July? Or would be a separate submittal?
Well, I think in the past, uh, there've been, there's at least one example in which the legal issue was part of the initial consideration. And, uh, I'm thinking of, well, it's an ongoing, uh, project of the, the sixty-one B property on Hunting Lane.
Yep.
There's an outgoing issue of site control.
Yep, yep.
And that was included in the select board's, uh, opinion. But I, I think, I think we need to speak with legal counsel to understand what the best way to do this is.
Okay. Do you want to, uh, does anyone else on the select board have any comments? Eric?
Yeah. Just maybe kind of along those lines. When Marion describes the process to someone else, let's spend a fair amount of time on what the scope is for this specific deliverable to, uh, to the state. And I think there's something like three or four items that are, that we're supposed to make an opinion on here. There's all the multi-step process, which Marion will explain, knows much better than I do. But it's like the detailed stuff that goes before the ZBA, new competent permit, there's other stuff and so on. Maybe we could just touch on the, again, I think it's like four items that, you know, uh, we're supposed to make an opinion on, um, for this, for this next stage, just so we can help keep focus.
Yeah, I thought it would help all of us. So that's, Marion has done a great job.
Thanks. And you know what? I should have made a list of those four items. Now I'm trying to remember exactly what they are.
That's all right.
I'll do my best. If Addie May is here, she can, oh, yes, she is. Good. Addie's here. She can help me. One item is, uh, of course, uh, public health and, and safety and Sherburne, that would be, that would include, uh, water and uh, groundwater and sewer health that might affect health of the population. Another, uh, major thing for mass housing is, um, uh, appropriateness for the character of the community. Um, Addie May, what's, what's the third one? Uh, traffic and safety, police, fire, traffic impacts, that sort of thing. That's three.
Um.
Addie's driving down the road, so don't let me distract you, Addie. If, we can come back to it.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've got, you've hit on the three major ones. I mean, I think, you know, the, the need is, is one, is an area that always gets addressed. Is there a need in the community for this project and the appropriateness of meeting those needs in the, in the community?
Right, okay. That would be the fourth then. And, uh, you're, you're right, Eric. It's a good suggestion to keep our, uh, I, I would put the legal issues aside definitely for this meeting, as Paul suggests, for that reason. Let's focus on what mass housing is asking us right now to give them feedback on. So forty B process.
Yeah.
Again, I may ask for Addie's help on this, but basically, we're very early in that process. I'm just going to give you the broad outline. Uh, the developer already submitted to the state, that is, the mass housing, which is, I believe, is a, a part of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Mass housing is the subsidizing agency that approves or disapproves a project for the, uh, for the financial subsidy that allows a forty B project to be done. So they're the, they're kind of the, the, um, the gatekeeper. Uh, they let the developer, uh, submitted his letter to mass housing. Mass housing responded rather quickly. Uh, they, uh, looked at the project on paper first, just to see if it looked like it was a viable project in very general terms. Is the, is the land big enough? Uh, you know, what's the situation in the town vis-à-vis the ten percent goal for affordable housing, et cetera? Mass housing already has determined that this is an eligible project for the forty B process. So, uh, the next, uh, then they had a, a site visit to look and see if the site seems to be appropriate. That is it big enough? Does the, uh, owner have true ownership? How many units are proposed? But beyond the site visit, they look for town input. And the town comments will cover, as I said, uh, safety, health, environmental issues. Is it consisting? Is it consistent with the existing, uh, neighborhood? It doesn't mean identical to the existing neighborhood, but would it fit in? And then safety. So those are the kinds of comments that the town will make to mass housing. Mass housing is looking for positive as well as negative comments. If there are, you know, if there are elements of this that are good for the town, then we should say that too. And those that we think may be problematic, we should say those too. But in, as far as, um, issues like water and environmental issues, one can make general statements about the site and the fact that we may be concerned about this or that thing. But at this stage, the plans are only rudimentary. Mass housing does not require a detailed engineering plan. It doesn't require that the developer say exactly where the septic or wells are going to go, how the stormwater is handled. Even the details of the houses are not set in stone. Changes can be made. But they are looking at the, is the number of units appropriate for the site? So we will put our, uh, analysis of the preliminary plan as it stands into a letter for mass housing. Mass housing will then respond. If it still seems to be eligible, uh, mass housing will respond usually with a long letter detailing the issues that have to be provided by the developer. The, uh, the, the detailed information that needs to be divided, provided by the developer to the ZBA. And that resubmission by, uh, it, then the, the developer will submit a much more detailed proposal to the zoning board of appeals, requesting a comprehensive permit. The state comprehensive permit means that the state doesn't want to hear from all the individual boards. They want the ZBA to take the project as a whole and make a comprehensive decision about whether it should be supported or not. And our ZBA has gone both ways. They've supported some and not supported others. So in the process, between the mass housing response to our initial letter that we're about to write and the applicant's submission to the zoning board, there's still a lot of work to be done. And, uh, there are many zoning board hearings to be had. Uh, the zoning board will hear from all the boards and committees in great detail, looking at the detailed engineering plans and everything else. And then at the end of that long process, uh, the zoning board will issue a comprehensive permit or deny a permit. Now, Department of Housing and, and Community Development understands that a developer can appeal the decision whichever way it goes, as can the town. So that's the long process that we're at the beginning of.
Great. Thank you, Marion. That's very helpful. Uh, so would you like to now turn to maybe just giving us, um, your, uh, recap? We, I know we've got a few people submitted comments like fifteen minutes before the meeting started. So I know we don't have those, but there were a few key committees, I think, already gave you some initial comments. Would you want to summarize those for, uh, everyone?
I will. And, uh, boards and committees, if you're here, uh, I'm doing my best to summarize the, the main points very telegraphically. Uh, you'll have a chance to talk later. But, uh, the planning board, on the positive side, acknowledged the need for affordable housing in town. And they like the fact that this, uh, development provided housing diversity, that is smaller housing options in a more cluster style. And they support the net-zero energy plan that the developer put forward. That's all positive. Um, on the negative side, the planning board was concerned that the eight duplexes, or I should say four duplexes, eight units, uh, are placed very near the road. I think within twenty feet or, uh, so of the road. I may be wrong about that. But their, their concern was that this creates a sort of wall of houses along uh, Farm Road that's inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood and with the scenic road. This is a state-designated scenic road. And they were concerned that there's no covered parking, uh, for the smaller units that may be occupied by elderly people. There were other things that they suggested might be added that were, are outside of the purview, like a sidewalk along Farm Road or, or electric vehicle charging stations. So that's the summary of planning board. Groundwater Protection Committee also acknowledged the need for affordable and diverse housing. On the negative side, they opened by saying they don't have detailed information yet. But given that they don't, uh, the information they'll be looking for are the water and septic constraints of the site because, uh, they have USGS data that, uh, creates caution about the hydrogeology of the area and the ability for septic systems. So more information is needed there. Um, they also thought that, uh, calculating the effects of this on our climate change and overall MS four permit would be important. The Water Commission also thought, uh, said that they could not evaluate it yet. They need much more detailed data. They suggested that perhaps a public water supply and, uh, wastewater treatment system might be better for this development because of the oversight of the state to both. The Fire Department had no concerns on the unit numbers or the access. They will require a fire system. They, uh, recommended adding sprinklers in all units. They acknowledged that that's not required for the seismic development. So those are the inputs we've gotten so far.
Okay, great. Thanks for summarizing them. Uh, now, I was going to next turn to all the boards and committees. Is anyone on the select board that like, you'd like to make a comment first, Eric?
Just one comment, question, just because we just had a presentation about it. Um, you know, it's kind of obvious. Board of Health will have some comments on, you know, water sewer. Well, Water Commissioner is planning board and someone like that, who, what's purview? Whose purview would stormwater be under? Would that be, I mean, because we actually have the, you know, general law, storm by law, with the NIPPI's permit. The permit is actually issued to the town itself. I guess the, the permit is issued to, um, the select board, I would assume, right? So any comments relative to at least an MS four permit, or perhaps even it? Oh, I have a feeling Christina, AKA Sean, probably has an answer.
Sean.
So the, the permit, um, the stormwater regs will still apply. Local regs won't. But under the MS four, um, obviously, they have to meet all the requirements of the state permit. And from my understanding, if this project or any future project were to go forward, now that we're under the requirements for phosphorus reduction, that they will have their own pocket of land, which is basically that land, that they will have to show a reduction of phosphorus to meet. So it'll, it'll almost be carved out of our piece. Um, as, as of right now, that isn't in the regulated area. But it, it, it will be its own little regulated area, basically, for phosphorus reduction. Everything else just needs to meet the stormwater standards.
Yeah, because it's more than an acre disturbance. I definitely get that. And I definitely get that's applicable because it's a federal permit co-signed by the state. So it's probably like more powerful than any of these other, you know, state, state laws, where there's more authority in that. I have no doubt about that. I guess wondering is, whose purview to make a comment? Do you know what I mean? Like, like Board of Health probably, you know, would, I guess, would it be us? Like, you know, because I get the rest of the boards and commissions and what's within their lane, what's within their purview, you know, where they make comments and what's their specialty. I guess who would make stormwater comments? Would it be us as owners of the actual MS four permit? Would it be the select board?
You know, I'm not sure. I know Gino has, uh, been leading the MS, the stormwater revision, revision of the stormwater bylaw, I should say. And.
Okay.
So if I could comment on that, what, what most towns are doing now are adopting stormwater bylaws. They're, they're like wetlands protection bylaws, but they are called for by the federal permit. And the issue is what board or committee has jurisdiction over stormwater. And pretty much, uh, uh, consistently now, communities are deciding it's the Conservation Commission who should have jurisdiction. I think the, the logic is very simple, that, that the Conservation Commission deals with wetlands. Wetlands is water. Stormwater is also water. And the stormwater tends to go into the wetlands. And therefore, most communities are adopting bylaws that assign jurisdiction to the Conservation Commission. We're not there yet. But if Gino's working on a stormwater bylaw, the answer to the question that Eric is asking would be in that bylaw and it would assign jurisdiction to somewhere.
So we have a stormwater bylaw, actually. It's in the general bylaws. It was passed, I think, three years ago. I'll double-check it.
Yeah, we do. Uh, we also have a groundwater protection committee.
Right.
That might be appropriate, working perhaps with CONCOM.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
One more comment. The, the bylaws, we're going to be constantly updating that bylaw to follow the permit. Uh, currently, most of the, um, most of it falls under the, the planning board. Their last update was last year. Um, but that had a, a lot to do with illicit discharges and some other authorities, uh, which, which became shared between planning board and, um, DPW. Uh, but this'll, this'll, this stormwater will never be part of the town's stormwater. They have, they are regulated. They have to deal with it on their own, on their own property. They will never discharge that stormwater to, to the town. So the authority will probably never, never fall outside of probably planning board or the permit itself. It'll, it, it's not a DPW issue. Um, but our regulations are following closely with the federal and, and state permit.
All right. That's right. I mean, the, the stormwater, the MS four, uh, and stormwater bylaw states that uh, water cannot leave the property. It has to be dealt with on the property. So that's right.
Okay, great. Um, Darryl, do you want to talk on this particular topic?
Uh, yeah, just briefly, although it's not critical. So the Board of Health does have regulations for larger projects. That says, most simply, you shall not increase or decrease, uh, the movement of stormwaters onto or off of the property by more than ten percent. Just as a way of either preventing neighbors' properties, say if they had a pond from drying up or from flooding their property. Uh, usually, the way, since we don't get a lot of larger projects, usually Conservation Commission has had, um, consultants that they've hired who help with those kind of evaluations for projects. And then the Board of Health just kind of follows suit. Uh, I think what the stormwater regs that Sean was talking about might also kind of supersede or take care of this issue if it gets covered at the state level. Um, and then in the past, the peer reviewers and other kind of support has handled that issue as well on forty B projects.
Okay, great.
Just, I have a quick follow-up?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Eric.
Just a quick one. So I, um, might take me a little lengthier discussion. But I did look at the bylaw and actually talks about that, as Sean indicated, that actually is by the, um, by the planning board. It talks about a stormwater management permit. I don't know if that's superseded by the, um, what do you call it? The general permit under the, um, under the ZBA. So if, if you don't get a stormwater management permit, um, but just to top and top what everyone else says. I do know that this bylaw was written consistent with it. It was not made more stringent than actually the state and federal requirements of the, uh, of the actual permit itself. So the requirements will hold for, will apply to this site. Um, and Sean, I can't, it won't go into the infrastructure, but nonetheless, even things about treatment and maintaining on-site and someone like that, land disturbance, um, does apply to this bylaw. I think what we need to figure out is how that mechanism goes. Maybe it's just a comment from us or from, from planning board or from DPW, um, to the ZBA when it gets at that detailed level.
So on other issues?
Go ahead, Paul.
So a, a project can be denied if it's not consistent with local needs. And one thing that is so obvious about Sherburne is that everybody is dependent upon their own individual well. And so when you look at the application of forty B to Sherburne, an issue of local concern would be the protection of drinking water. And therefore, a focus of inquiry on our side should be whether this project is going to affect the wells of Butters and of the neighborhood and of that, that portion of the town. And wells can be affected by blasting or a, a big water usage that, that dries up other wells around it, and so on and so on. So somebody, it's one of our boards or committees ought to be addressing impacts on wells. That should be, in part, the Board of Health. And in part, I'll have to think about who else would have jurisdiction over wells. But maybe the Groundwater Protection Committee should be involved also making comments. Have, have they been solicited to make comments?
Yes.
Uh, yes, they, they did make comments, Paul, and pending detailed, detailed plans, of course. They're, one of their main comment is that they will be looking closely at groundwater protection for exactly that reason. And I want to mention also that several citizen comments have come in to the Select Board, and I didn't want to list them all. But groundwater and well water protection is a major issue for citizen comments, many of them from the neighborhoods. So it's a big point that will be made in the letter.
So it's a truly significant point. And it's, it's a winning, if you're opposed to the project, it's actually a winning argument for a town like Sherburne because we have no public water supply. And it's absolutely critical for every homeowner to be able to have water. If you don't have water on your property, you're, you're moving out of town.
No, we know that, Paul. I think we know that. Most people do anyway. So what I'd like to do now is just see, my next, in my little playbook here, was any representatives that want to make a comment on behalf of individual board or committee in town that in addition.
All right, Jeff, Jeff, I still had one. I hadn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, George.
And I have one more too, Jeff.
All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Marion, do you want to go first?
Oh, yeah. Mine is pretty quick. I, I really think it's great that there's a lot of effort being made toward energy neutrality. And that's totally great. I'm, on, on the plans as they current are, currently are, and I know this may change, there's dependence on a ground-mounted solar panel system at sort of the top of the property. And I think that according to state guidelines regarding solar installments, ground-mounted solar, especially in an undisturbed forest area, is sort of the last resort for ground-mounted solar. And it should only be used if rooftop solar has been maximized first. That's my only other comment.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Um, yeah, I just want to make a comment because I made a similar comment when we were discussing Hunting Lane, and I like to try to be consistent. I've been in support of the Coolidge project in the past. I've been in support of some sort of development on North Main. But when, when it comes to roads like Hunting Lane and Farm Road, I feel like dense developments are not the right thing for these areas. I think these, these roads, all of us drive on these roads. There, there's high-end single-family homes on these roads, and a dense development just doesn't fit the character of a scenic, a scenic road like Farm Road. And, and, you know, like I said, I'm in support of smart development in Sherburne because I think it'll help our revenue. It'll help us get to our 10%. But I feel like this does not fit the neighborhood. And I, and I think we need to, we need to include that. Marion did mention, you know, does it fit the immediate neighborhood? And I would say a dense development like this does not fit the immediate neighborhood on Farm Road.
Okay. Thank you, George. So why don't we turn to any committees that, I'm not sure who's all here that have any other additional comments representing their committee perspective? CONCOM, Board of Health, I don't see Rick Novak, I don't see ZBA's here. I'm not sure. Is there anyone that wants to? Darryl, Darryl's got a hand up again.
Okay, I'm just gonna repeat really what you said on July 6th via Zoom. The board, this will be one of the topics of discussion for the Board of Health. People are, of course, welcome to come.
Okay, thank you. Paul, you were gonna add a point?
Yeah, I was gonna say to stay away from the Board of Appeals because under the comprehensive permit system, the act is judge.
Yep.
The whole thing. And we don't want them to be advocating, you know, pro or con position on this letter.
Okay. Good point.
Yeah, we did not, we did not solicit a comment from Board of Appeals for that reason.
Okay. All right. So now I'd like to open it up to anyone in the audience, residents or anyone that wants to make an individual comment, or if you're someone that sent a comment in, but it was some of the ones we think we just got shortly before the meeting. We may not have had a chance to read it, so you could make the comment verbally if you want. Is there any, I don't see any hands up, but raise your little electronic yellow hand if you can, please. Melinda?
Hi. I can't comment, although I sit both on the Groundwater Protection Committee and the Farm Pond Advisory Committee. I'm not representing either one of them, but I just share that because I have a lot of information related to Farm Pond. And my only comment is that I would ask anybody interested in this project and, and looking at it to remember Farm Pond. The project sits, I believe, just sort of just out of the watershed area. I don't think it's in it, but it's right there. And I'm thinking about Emily Norton's comments from the Charles River Watershed Committee, and the idea of, you know, properties and individual property management. And I'm just sort of thinking in the back of my mind about all of the individual properties that flow from that space down towards Farm Pond, and that we, you know, we don't have individual bylaws and regulations right now, which is fine. But, you know, if everybody, and I know this is not going to happen, I'm just sort of tossing it out for consideration, if everyone who was on the properties between the proposed property and Farm Pond decided, you know what, I'd really love a great view. I think I'll cut down all my trees because I'd love a view of Farm Pond. That's going to change the vegetative buffer. It's going to change the filtration system. And I'm not an expert, but I'm just floating the idea that one might imagine that maybe it could change how the, the ecosystem of Farm Pond in a very long-range view. So I just wanted to just sort of pop that in. And so I guess my conclusion is remember Farm Pond.
Will do. Thank you very much, Melinda. Anybody else have any other comments?
Could we ask the developer to put on a little?
I was about to do that. Bob, do you want to add any input?
Um, not really, Jeff, in that I didn't come prepared to do that. I didn't think that was my role tonight. I'm, I would love to come, you know, when I'm invited to speak to you, and I can give you a lot of detail and answer any questions you have. But I didn't, didn't really think of tonight as that opportunity. I thought it was an opportunity for others to make comments. But I appreciate the invitation. And anytime, just invite me.
All right. We'll do that. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Wow, you guys are surprising me. I guess we'll have more detail in two weeks. So we'll look forward to that. All right. So if there's no further select board input on this item, I think we can move on to routine business.
And maybe, maybe can I ask you a question then?
Yeah.
Yeah, you had to stretch it on. I had to say something, right? What is it? So Marion's summary. Marion, between, um, there has been a summary of this process actually written down somewhere, isn't it? Can that be posted or posted with this?
Yeah, that'd be.
To educate people?
Actually, I was looking for that, Eric, and I didn't find the summary that I wanted. But I, I will post it. I will post it on the town website, if you like. I will certainly send it to the Select Board, but.
Maybe it's already been published by the Planning Board or something like that. I'm sure something has.
I'm sure it is multiple times. I just.
Yeah.
You know, probably has five of them. And maybe put it like either with this link, like this link leads you somewhere, right next to this link, or something like that. Just, you know, user-friendly to people, that's all.
Yeah.
Good idea.
That's a great idea. All right. So we're moving on to routine business. Are there any select board reports? I, I actually have two to make, but I'll let, anyone else want to go first?
I have, I have one. If, I just want to say thank you and, and job well done to the Fire Department. Zach Ward put on a wonderful fundraiser last night for, with the spaghetti dinner and the whole Fire Department, not just Zach. You know, I was just very, I was happy to attend. They did a great job. Hopefully raised a lot of money for a very good cause.
Yeah, that's great. Little carbo loading for us runners, too. Go ahead, Marion.
Yeah, I have a, a short thing. You recall when we did a master plan update of, of at least part of the master plan several months ago, I, you agreed that you'd like to hear from various boards and committees that have been doing a lot of things that you may not know about. So the, we, we wondered if we might include in that lineup of boards and committees, the, the Forest and Trail Association. It's not a board or committee, but they probably do more for the town's open space than, than anybody else. And so I'm asking if you would like to hear an update on what Forest and Trail has been doing since the master plan. I mention it because they were named in the master plan in many places for implementation because that's pretty much what they do is on-the-ground implementation.
Yeah.
If you'd like, I have someone lined up to speak for Forest and Trail.
Yes, yes.
That'd be excellent, but probably not for a month or so because we have, like, the next few meetings are pretty booked.
Yeah. And, and the first, like, less, less booked meeting.
Yep, yep. Probably in August would work. We'll see, you know, where that fits in. But yeah, I think it's, you know, a good thing to make people more aware of what all the committees in town are doing. And, you know, there's misperceptions or, or no perceptions of some of the committees. So I think that would be great. And I think doing it would then maybe help us recruit, that once people know more about, recruit people to join, volunteer for the committees. All right. So I have a couple of things to mention. One is on, what I, I lost track of days this week. I think on Wednesday, we met with Standard and Poor's. We're trying to, they do, I think it's every three years, review our bond rating. So Heidi, she's here. Heidi and Deb pretty much led the effort with the support from Diane. And then I participated, as did Dan Sickle from Advisory. And so we had about an hour-long discussion with six pages of detailed points that we made for the Standard and Poor's group. We had two people from Standard and Poor's on the call, one in Washington, one in Boston. And we reviewed in detail every aspect of our budget from 2021 all the way through 2025, I think, as well as our capital plan. Lots of, you know, even like the, I talked about the Regional Dispatch Center for Police and any financial aspect that we could mention about the town to make the case that we're very well managed. Included, you know, you know, funding for reserves and all, all kinds of things. And so we thought it went extremely, extremely well. They, they had very little follow-up questions. They seemed really pleased with what we gave them. So we're, we're cautiously optimistic, I think is the word. And they told us that, Deb, you can pipe in if you want to, but they told us, I think on July 12th, they'll be giving us what their bond rating is. So we should know in two weeks. I don't know if Heidi's on. Deb, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, nothing more than that, other than it did seem like it went really well. Heidi did a tremendous job keeping us in the loop and moving us forward. And yeah, July the 12th was the date that they were going to let us know what our bond rating is going to be.
Yeah, and I just found you on page two, Heidi. Did you want to add anything or take a bow?
No, it was a team effort. So thank you to everyone. And Marion actually had a lot of input with the updating on the master plan. And a lot of people helped, so thank you.
Yeah, it was really a good call, I thought. We sort of, you know, I think they appreciated what we did. So next thing, I met this morning with Diane with our cable contracts. We have to renew our Verizon cable access contract expires in November, early November of this year. And our, I don't have it right in front of me. I think it's two years from now our Comcast cable expires. And the problem with these cable contracts is that they're, you know, they're thinking everyone's going to go to Wi-Fi soon and, and be not using hardwired cable to their homes. So they're not as into long-term contracts. For example, our Verizon contract that's expiring was a 15-year contract, which is unheard of now, I guess. And so right now Comcast will probably give us a 10-year contract. They're going more with that route. But Verizon won't go any term longer than five years. And even with five years, at year three, they want to be able to exit with a six-month notice from year three to year five. So we're looking, it's just the early stages, and we have six months before the Verizon expires. So we, we met, it's the one you recommended, Paul. I think that Bill Salmon, Salmon, is that his name?
Solomon.
Solomon, yeah. So we met with him this morning with, we, obviously, it directly affects Dover Sherburne Cable TV. So we had, we had Doug Ambos and Mike Klein from, who's the manager of Dover Sherburne Cable TV on the call with us. And Sean was on the call as well, and Diana, myself. So if anyone has input on that, I, my son's an electric engineer, and he's kind of been helping with the library. So I'm going to probably get input from him on it, too, because he's been meeting with some of the library team on the technology for the library. But if anyone has any input on that, that was something that we worked on recently. And I just wanted, we probably shouldn't discuss the details tonight, but I wanted to let you know that we're meeting in two weeks, as I mentioned, to, to review the final submittal to mass housing on the 40B project. And we're going to dedicate the meeting on the 30th of June to interviewing candidates for town administrator.
With the June is today.
I think you meant, Jeff, I think you've got the dates wrong.
Yeah, July 30th. I'm sorry. I, I, yeah, yeah. I just had, I had the date right, the month, month, I'm sorry, July 30th.
28th, probably July 28th.
July 28th. We'll review the, two weeks from July 4th, we'll review the candidates that we put forward and have, that'll be pretty much, we looked at the, I was thinking of a special meeting, but we looked at the agenda, and there's only a couple of appointments for that date. So it'll be pretty much dedicated the whole night to that. If we end up having, I think, three candidates and an hour or so per candidate and, you know, time for discussion, that, that's already going to be a long meeting. So I think we should start at 6:30 again and maybe get out of there by 10:00 PM or something. It'd be a lengthy night, but it's an important focus.
So while we're on the subject, I wanted to take a moment to thank everybody who worked on the Town Administrator Search Committee. That includes Jeff.
Vicky's the chair.
Vicky Relles, the chair.
She's here, I think.
Diane to put together a list of all the members. I think it would be nice if Diane could read all the names of the people. A lot of time and effort had gone into this by all of these members. They deserve our thanks. Diane, can you read the, the membership?
Yes, I can. It was, Vicky Relles was the chair. There was Bill Seymour, Mary Wolf, George Fisk, Paul Durensis, Jeff Waldron, and Carol De Souza, and Courtney Eck. That was the committee. They did a great job.
Yes. They were, they were absolutely wonderful committee.
All right.
Thank you.
So those are, those are my updates. Is there any other select board updates?
To give you a heads up, I am going to be in upstate New York next week, our 14th, when we're, have our meeting. But I, I should be able to connect. I don't know how good my Wi-Fi is going to be, but just, I will try to attend. It may only be by phone if, but I will be there because I know we have to do year-end transfers and everything, but.
Yeah, yeah. Your input would be great.
My niece is getting married, and my daughters are bridesmaids, so we're going to be in upstate New York for that.
My niece is getting married and my daughters are bridesmaids, so we're going to be in upstate New York for that. So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, um, I think that's, that'd be fine. Maybe go to your local library. There's some kind of Wi-Fi they have or something, too. I don't know.
My mother's on the local library board, so maybe she'd make, uh, get in.
Um, so then, uh, did you have anything you want to add as a town administrator report?
I don't have a thing tonight, uh, Jeff.
All right. Well, I think, you know, we did pretty well. I thought there was going to be more comments. 8:20, how about that, you guys? Pretty good. So thank you for everything and, uh, we'll see you in two weeks and then anyone.
Have a nice Fourth of July.
Vacation next week. Have a great vacation. Ciao, guys.
So do you want to motion to adjourn?
Yeah, yeah, I, we, we, I'm not used to not having an executive session to egg you first. So, so yes, uh, so you want to make the motion, Paul? Did you move?
Sure.
Nice second.
Uh, George's second. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I might as well.
Good night.
Keeping me honest. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.